Chairman.
Okay, we're gonna call our regular commission, Ware County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Monday, July the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty at five o'clock P. M. Begin with a roll called vote of commissioners, beginning with Commissioner Pope.
Present.
Commissioner Carter.
Present.
Commissioner Burris.
Present.
Commissioner Barnard.
Present.
And the chair is present, let the record show, Ms. Manager. We all present the county for. Uh, we will start our meeting with invocation by Commissioner Carter. And, uh, pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Barnard, let's all stand please.
All right. Our Father in heaven, we thank you, Lord, for this day. Thank you, Father, for your love and your mercy. Thank you, Lord, for every blessing that you showered upon us. We know, Lord, that we're an undeserving people, but only by your grace and your love that we receive the blessings from day to day.
Yes.
Bless this community. Bless this board, Lord, that whatever we say or do, that we enter into today, that, Lord, it may bring honor and glory to your name.
Yes.
And would influence this county to do your will.
Yes.
Have mercy upon us, use us for your glory, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Lord, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I wanna, at this time, thank everybody for coming and thank Ms. Meyer from the General Harold for being here and Ms. Jennifer Herzog, our attorney. And welcome, everybody. Uh, I would like to call to the commission, uh, to approve our agenda. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion to approve the agenda, it's important.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second. Begin with a roll called vote of commissioners, beginning with Commissioner Pope.
Aye.
Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
Commissioner Burris.
Aye.
Commissioner Barnard.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, we have a special presentation, but, uh...
You wanna flip those two and go down to the next one since he's...
Yes. All right, uh, we'll go down to item, may approval of the, uh, meeting minutes, a call meeting of April the twenty-seventh, two thousand and...
I'm sorry, the one before that, the one for, uh, Board of Elections, I'm sorry.
Oh, excuse me.
It's kinda small time.
Commissioner, former Commissioner Carlos Nelson. And Board of Elections Director now, thank you, sir. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, good afternoon. Just wanted to give you an update on, um, on this past election and some of the changes that we're looking at doing, just wanted to get y'all, uh, kinda like y'all stamp of approval. You know, we had a little short of eight, um, seventy-seven hundred people to vote in this, uh, last election. We had some hiccups, you know, we had some long lines at a couple precincts, um, that closed kinda, you know, kinda, kinda late, later than we had hoped. Um, but a lot of it was because, you know, there were two or three things. Um, you know, we had some new managers that did a wonderful job, but managing a poll is not just getting people in to vote, you know, you have to manage your lines and manage a lot of things, so they learned a lot. And the reason why we had to have new poll managers is because of COVID. You know, um, we had quite a few experienced poll managers and workers that did not want to work because they were kinda fearful of, um, of what was going on. So we had to kinda like recruit some new people, um, promote some people up to poll managers and, but all in all, they did a wonderful job, uh, working through some of the, um, snags that, uh, that had a couple of sites, um, kinda like a little long and, you know, um, all out the door, some of we couldn't avoid. Uh, one of the main reasons, things we couldn't avoid was that when the Secretary of State sent out the applications for absentee ballot, a lot of people received their ballots with no intention of actually voting absentee. And so, when they arrive at the polls, first thing we have to see whether they voted absentee or not. If they received the ballot, then it takes another five or ten minutes to counsel that ballot and then allow them to vote because, you know, we can't allow anyone to vote twice.
That's right.
And so first they had to call the office to make sure the absentee ballot wasn't received in the office, and if it wasn't, then they're allowed to vote. So that, that slowed down the lines a lot, too. Um, this election would be much different, the Secretary of State is not going to send out absentee applications, they will send out what they call rollover applications to people that are elderly, disabled, that wanted, receive a ballot, uh, will, will get one. So that will help us out tremendously. But one of the things we looked at is, is trying to really speed things up for the early voting, we had about fifteen hundred people that voted earlier this last election, and we averaged about a hundred people a day. Um, going back and looking at the historical data, uh, four years ago, we had a little over six thousand that voted early. And so that would have been nearly three hundred people a day, which, that, that is very tough to handle in the office that we have currently on Tebow Street. So as, as staff, we were looking at ways of trying to speed the lineup, hopefully encouraging, one, people to vote absentee if they can, two, vote early, during early election. Um, that, those two things there would help us relieve a lot of the crowds and the lines for election day. So as we were talking, I called, um, the manager and said, we have an idea, what do you think about us, um, presenting to our board, the idea of using a secondary early voting location in here, in the, in the admin building? You know, and, um, came down, met with Scott, we talked about the meeting room between the Texas Commissioners and Board of Assessors. There's a, kinda like a little conference room there, it's big enough to get like five or six machines in there. Um, we can hook up the computer, uh, with a secure network because we all on the same county network, so we know Derek, we have everything secure. It'd just be like having another precinct for those three weeks right here in sight. So it, this would give citizens an opportunity to vote either place, you know? If you drive by in downtown and you see it's a line, come right here and vote, vice versa. You know, this, this way, I think we can really have more than six or seven, eight thousand people voting, because we're anticipating, probably we're, I hate to guess, but we're anticipating about eight thousand voters that will vote early. And that would be great if we do. Um, four years ago, we had a little over sixteen thousand registered voters in Ware County, and as of today, we have a little shorter, twenty-one thousand. So we have about five thousand more than we had, so I'm, I'm expecting about two thousand, probably more voters that will vote early, especially if they're allowed to get in quicker, you know, for early voting, they'll probably stop in if they're down here paying their taxes or coming, you know, to the admin building for another reason, they can stay here and just vote and, and knock it all out at one time. So we're anticipating that, so I wanted to update you on that, to basically get y'all stamp of approval, you know, um, this is ultimately y'all building, you know, and I just wanted to make sure y'all understand what we're trying to do, is try, you know, trying to get more voters in, trying to ease the waiting line for the November third election, because it will be a huge election. So that's the first thing. The second thing is one of all sites, um, we currently use Emerson Park Fire Station, which we are grateful to the county and to the, um, Fire Department for allowing us to use it, but it is a small precinct, very, very small, barely enough room to get three machines in, um, and with all the other stuff that we have. So what we're, we've been in communication with, uh, the Emerson Park Baptist Church, which is right around the corner. Um, they are very open to us using their facility, um, their, their little, um, um, kinda like little social hall, there we can get probably six machines in there, and that will help out that community, um, during voting day also. And maybe, you know, going forward, we wanna use that same facility going forward, but, uh, you know, we're closing down Emerson Park Volunteer Fire Station after this August eleventh election, and going forward with the Emerson Park Baptist Church location. So these are the two things that we're trying to do to really help, um, uh, you know, the public better access to voting and get them in and get them out as quickly as possible, and so everybody can have their right to, you know, to vote in a, in a, in a, in a quick and professional manner. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, uh, Commission, if you have any questions or concerns about anything I mentioned, about the building, you know, anything, please let me know, be glad to answer any questions.
Y'all have any questions for, uh...
Well, I would just like to say, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, first of all, I applaud, uh, Mr. Nelson and his team for their efforts in trying to, uh, make it more easier for people to be able to vote, because a lot of time, this is what causes us low turnout sometime, because people just say, well, I'm not gonna be put up with all that aggravation and everything, so I think it's a great idea to have another alternative site, you know, to have, uh, the voting and also, uh, to increase voter participation. So, uh, I applaud you all for that, and, uh, hopefully that'll help, you know, make a greater turnout.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, that's one reason this building was built, for the use of the Ware County citizens and to vote here would be a perfect use for it.
Yep. And, uh, I'd like to echo what the other, our two Commissioners here has already said, and then, of course, Commissioner Barnard and Carter, uh, we appreciate the, the good job. I know you jumped into it real quick, and, and I thought many times, I said, oh my goodness, he got a lot to do in a short time to do it in, but, but I heard a lot of good things.
Appreciate it, I thought the same thing.
You probably won't agree to it.
I guess your hair's a little thin.
That's true, it is, it's grayer. You haven't seen my chin too much, it's gray on the chin.
But anyhow, thank you for what you've, and the staff done, and your board, and we appreciate it very much, and to the taxpayers of Waycross and Ware County.
Appreciate it, thank you, appreciate it.
Good best to y'all.
Thank you, Carlos.
Okay, all right. We'll get right into our next item. Uh, I'm gonna do a, a very special presentation, and, uh, I wanna call the sheriff to come up here, we gonna, we gonna, we gonna, we gonna make you...
Did I? I was hoping I would.
I had some comments, Chairman, I wanted to make. As all of you know, or may not know, I've known this, this guy here since he was eighteen years old, the first day he walked in Sheriff's Office over there. Sheriff Strickland is a dispatcher, is that right?
That's right.
So me and him's kinda raised up in the county government together. Only difference is I got fifty-two years almost, and he's got forty, so, he's got a, he's got a ways to go yet.
That's right, that's right.
But anyhow, we wanted to, we wanted to share our appreciation with you and with the taxpayers of Waycross and Ware County, and it goes like this, the Ware County Board of Commissioners would like to recognize Sheriff Randy Royal. For forty years of outstanding service, we appreciate the tremendous job you do and your loyalty and dedication to the citizens of Ware County, presented on this thirteenth day of July, twenty twenty.
Wow, wow, Chairman, I'm on it.
Now, 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 we're gonna let you talk.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it, I appreciate it. That is, uh, Chairman, the Commissioners and Manager, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it very much. I am humbled, uh, by this presentation, and I would like to, uh, just make a few remarks. I'm a humble man here today, I promise, as I reflect upon my forty years of career with Ware County, in many ways, it seems like just yesterday, that I began at the age of seventeen, actually, Chairman, at, at a young age, no doubt, as a dispatcher, and on other days, it seems like a lifetime ago. I am deeply indebted to all of those individuals who have helped me achieve this career milestone. It, it, I promise, it has been by many people that have helped me along the way. There are far too many people to thank individually, and inevitably, I would leave someone out if I was trying to name each and every one. I would not want to leave anyone out whose kindness and support at a critical time in my career meant the world to me, nevertheless, please know, I truly appreciate each and every one of you that has... aided me along the way. I am deeply blessed by your kindness, both words and deeds. I would also like to draw your attention to the fact that if you work hard, you can make a good career working for Ware County. There's certainly no doubt about that, great place to work. I've always worked diligently to become a servant leader, I will not ask anything of anyone that I'm not willing to do myself. In each of the various roles, dispatcher, jailer, deputy sheriff, patrol sergeant, lieutenant, captain, major, or now a sheriff, I have made it a priority to truly listen to the needs and the work with my team to find solutions to whatever issue is permit, is presented. Ware County, no doubt, has been very good to Randy Royal. My mentors at the Sheriff's Office are many, of course, I'd be remiss without naming Sheriff Strickland, Sheriff Bond, Sheriff McQuig. I want to also recognize Ware County offered flexibility with my work schedule with the Sheriff's Agreement, so that I could advance my education, all while working full-time. With a great deal of hard work and tenacity, I was able to earn an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, I completed the Law Enforcement Command College, and I ultimately attained a master's degree in public administration from the Columbus State University. I greatly appreciate this opportunity afforded to me and try to repay this kindness by putting what I have learned back into the Sheriff's Office. I strive to be a good steward of both public trust and the public funds that have been entrusted to me. I wish to say again, I truly appreciate the citizens of Ware County, those in county government, and my brothers and sisters at the Sheriff's Office, who have made my career what it is today. It has been my distinct honor and privilege to serve this county for four decades, and God willing, I will continue to do so well into the future, I pray. I thank you, and I'm humbled again to be here, and I'm very grateful for this presentation to all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff, we appreciate you.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate you and the service.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you all, Commissioners, Chairman.
All right, our next item here, uh, is approval of, uh, meeting minutes of April the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, public hearing, uh, May the eleventh, twenty twenty, regular meeting of May eleventh, twenty twenty, a joint call meeting of June the first, twenty twenty, a work session of June the eighth, twenty twenty, a regular meeting of June the eighth, twenty twenty, a call meeting of June the twenty-second, twenty twenty, a public hearing on June the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, and a call meeting of June the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion, I got a second, Commissioner Carter. Any questions or corrections, Commissioners that you know of? There ain't none, begin with a roll called vote, beginning with Commissioner Barnard.
Aye.
Commissioner Burris.
Aye.
Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
And Commissioner Pope.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right, we'll get right on the entire agenda there, uh, item A, Mr. Manager.
Okay, under, uh, tab eight is an request, request to approve a beer and wine consumption off premises license, uh, at twenty-seven twenty Albany Avenue.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Chairman, I move, um, approval of the application as presented.
Okay. Got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, got a motion in a second, any questions for the manager?
Just to reiterate, uh, Mr. Manager, all qualifications were met, uh, wasn't it a thing?
None, no, sir, no, no disqualifiers.
Okay.
Any more questions? There ain't none, we got a motion in a second, begin with a roll called vote, beginning with Commissioner Burris.
Aye.
Commissioner Barnard.
Aye.
Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
And Commissioner Pope.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Item B, Mr. Manager.
Um, under tab B is request to approve a beer and wine consumption license, off premises license, excuse me, uh, at nineteen hundred Alma Highway.
Okay, do I have a motion? Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any, any further questions for the manager on this issue? There ain't none, begin with a roll called vote, beginning with Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
Commissioner Pope.
Aye.
Commissioner Burris.
Aye.
Commissioner Barnard.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Item C, Mr. Manager.
Okay, under tab C is a request to approve a lease agreement with Action Pack Southeast Georgia Casa, uh, for office space lease at the Juvenile Court Building on, uh, Tebow Street.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I shall move.
Okay, I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any further questions for the manager on this issue?
There was a revision made to it, and we have someone here to speak to it, it has to do with insurance of the contents, but I'll let you give them a brief overview on it, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, good evening, I appreciate the opportunity, I jumped on it, so, uh, again, we, I wanna, first off, let me thank y'all for, for allowing us to utilize that space, it's been a godsend to be able to, uh, better connect with the, uh, children in, in foster care. The, uh, one change to the, uh, agreement was the, uh, number twenty-three, we have changed it to read, um, where we're gonna cover the contents of the leased space. Like wording, lessy shall always maintain adequate insurance coverage on the contents of the leased space, lesser should be named as additional insured, unless these general liability coverage, although the coverage must meet required state minimums, that's the only change we had.
Okay. Okay.
Madam Attorney, you've approved that change.
That was just the first time I became aware of it, but I assumed it had been discussed with Mr. Mori already, and he's okay with it, so...
So you're good with the whole lease agreement?
Yes, but, but, I mean, the change was simply, and I haven't, I don't, we drafted the original language, so of course I prefer that, but my understanding is the change that now is specific to just the lease contents is what's being insured.
Right.
So you all need to understand that their insurance coverage will not cover any damage that's done to our facility, that would then be under our insurance.
You're good with that, Scott?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's just their contents of what they have there to work with, furniture and accessories and those kinda things. We have insurance on the building in case something were to happen, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion.
It's kinda like renters insurance, basically, you, you know, for contents.
Commissioner Pope, you made the motion, correct?
I will make the motion to approve the lease, did I already make it? I don't think we did.
I don't think so.
Not yet.
We didn't make it, I'm making the motion to approve the lease, with the changes.
Okay, all right, we got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any, and now, any further questions? There ain't none, begin with a roll called vote, beginning with Commissioner Barnard.
Aye.
Commissioner Burris.
I'm gonna recuse myself on this, I chaired the Action Pack Board, so...
Okay, that's correct. Commissioner Pope.
Aye.
And Commissioner Barnard.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right. Oh, you done voted, sir. So I, I, let me back up on this one. That's all right. Commissioner Carter. Change that in a minute, Mr. Manager.
I'll do it, sure will.
All right, uh, item D, resolution, Mr. Manager.
Okay, under tab D is Resolution twenty twenty twelve, because I had to renumber, um, the first Resolution twenty twenty twelve is actually omitted, so now we'll renumber this one, twenty twenty twelve, uh, is to auth- authorize a referendum to allow Sunday sales by the package in an unincorporated area of the county.
Okay, do I have a motion?
This is to authorize the, for referendum, right?
For just the referendum, yes.
Just the referendum on it, okay. For purposes of vote, now, I'll make a motion to, uh, bring it to a vote for, authorize for the refer- referendum.
Okay, I got a motion, do I have a second? Do I have a second? Okay, we have no second, so this, this item dies for a lack of, of, uh, action, is that the correct word?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, we'll go to item E.
Okay, under tab, excuse me, under tab E is a request to appoint, uh, members to the Waycross Ware County Planning Commission, uh, for posts three, four, and six. Uh, post three would be, uh, Ms. Christie Foreman, um, post six would be Ms. Catherine Taylor, and post four would be Mr. Timmy Lucas.
Okay, Commissioners, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, you just say the names that have been presented to us.
I'll second it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second, any further discussion on these, uh, recommended appointments? There ain't none, begin with a roll called vote, beginning with Commissioner Pope.
Aye.
Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
Commissioner Burris.
Aye.
Commissioner Barnard.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, do we have any, any letters of comments, Mr. Manager?
No, sir, no, sir, we don't.
All right, county managers report.
I don't have anything to add, no, sir.
All right. Commissioners, yes, it's Commissioner Pope.
Right now, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Burris?
Yes, I have a few items here, um, first of all, uh, on the referendum issue about the, uh, Sunday alcohol sales, I want to get the motion on the floor so that we could go and vote on it, up or down, uh, as far as the referendum, which has died for lack of a second, so, uh, but anyway, I just wanna make clarification on that, not that I supported it, but I just wanted to get it on the record for a vote.
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, also, I'd like to continue to encourage our citizens to, uh, remember the splot referendum that's coming up, uh, as we indicated earlier, I think that, you know, it failed the last time in the county, but maybe for not marking it is whether we should have, and, uh, so we're trying to go back and regroup that and really kinda let the citizens know what this splot takes, how much it means to us, and how much of an impact it can have on this community, so, uh, as I heard, I think somebody in a song one time said about, don't believe the hype, so it's a lot of hype going on now about the splot and what it's not gonna do and what it's gonna do, but, uh, need to get the facts about it. And also, I wanna commend our Commission Board for signing out the letter of, uh, on the House Bill four twenty-six, which was the hate crimes bill, and letter of support of it that passed, and, uh, the... And, uh, they noticed something that's pretty much been rampant in our country today is hate.
Yeah.
And in all forms, you know, gender, religion, race. So we as a board, we signed a letter of, uh, support for the hate, uh, hate crime legislation, House Bill 426. And also, uh, I've been talking with the managing, uh, we're trying to work on something to the, for the citizens in District One about the lighting at Memorial Park. And hopefully sometime soon we can have something in place to where we can have the proper lighting. Not then, I think we're gonna have a little bit better lighting. And, uh, this will be for the citizens so they can utilize this Memorial Park at night for walking or whatever. Because, you know, with this COVID-19 and we're being limited on what we can do. So, uh, I appreciate the county manager for working with me on that. And hopefully we can have something in place soon, uh, for the, uh, Memorial Park and residents in that area and people that use that park. Uh, I think that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Burris, I don't have anything. Commissioner Carter?
I, uh, how soon are we planning on having any type of, of, uh, town hall meetings concerning, uh, the benefits and the so forth of, uh, SPOLOX to better, to better inform the people what SPOLOX is all about? Uh, I've even heard again the other day that we had promoted ourselves a, another raise. And they don't even know that we can't even give a raise.
It was your game.
We don't have any control of the money. We just, all we do is, as designated in a county budget as far as us a raise, that we can't do that. That's beyond our, uh, operations. So it's not on our pay grade. I don't know whose it is.
Beyond our control.
Yeah. But how soon can we expect to have some type of town hall meetings? So, Mr. Manager, do we have any type of thing worked up?
Uh, we can, I would imagine, within the next few weeks. We would have to plan it, look for locations, uh, look for availability and those kind of things and then set it that way. The only thing that I can think would impact that would be, um, the, the virus and how we handle that with group, you know, settings. Because you'll have some folks saying that, you know, they want to go, but they don't want to go. Uh, it might be, one way you could do it, now that you have Facebook Live and those things, you could actually hold it here and then have people to call in for questions and that kind of thing. And then kind of do it where you broadcast it to everybody. And you could have multiple, though, you could have multiple sessions that way. And no one would have to leave their home. They could just pick up the phone, watch it on TV or on their computer, their phone and, and do it that.
Advertise that type of, uh, meeting and, uh,
Yes, sir.
Maybe have a couple of them.
Yes, sir. You can.
We could do that.
You can do it right here.
So, I mean, I, I think we ought to have at least a couple of them. Do, uh.
And then we could let folks, um, submit questions, um, beforehand. You know, try to start gathering beforehand of questions that people would like to know and then address those questions.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I think we need to make sure that those organizations who are affected by the SPOLOX tax come and give their information on their projects, um, and then give as much information as allowable by, you know, the law. And I think Jennifer was getting that list to give everybody, the sheriff, I mean, Miracle League, the, I mean, there's just a lot of, there's just a lot of organizations that will be affected by it. And they can give information.
Right.
Um, but they need to be scheduled for this or have two or three or have a, whatever, whatever it works out.
And, you know, Mr. Chairman, I think that was the success whenever the first SPOLOX tax passed, uh, and consequence since that time was everybody had some skin in the game. You know, they went out and made their presentations and, uh, you know, like I said, it was before COVID and all this stuff. But they went around and let the people know what was, the money is going to really be used for and to really try to, uh, let them have some input into it. So I think that's good, Commissioner Carter, that, you know, we can go and maybe like I say, have town hall meetings or do it Facebook Live or whatever. But, uh, we need to educate the public better about what we're going to try to do and, uh.
Could we advertise this type of, uh, thing in the paper and, uh, that we're going to have this thing and, uh,
Yes, sir.
And, uh, maybe, uh,
Put these in the paper, too.
Get it, get, get the show on the road, so to speak.
Right. Yes, sir. I have some information going out, I believe, this week in the newspaper uh, to give some, uh, background of SPOLOX and what it's for and try to explain some of the things that's, some misinformation that's being posted all over Facebook about it. But, uh, to try to start a process of informing and education, that kind of thing.
Right. Chairman, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, I know, uh, Mr. Stink, when he come up, uh, about the CASA and like I said, I couldn't comment on that. But he is our executive director at the, uh, Action Pack now, formerly Conservative Services. And, uh, so I just wanted to recognize him and, uh, the job he's doing out there.
Got your big bam right there.
Oh, yeah. Thanks. So, and so, uh, but anyway, I concur with what he's saying. We appreciate everything as far as the space for the, uh, CASA program. And it's had a big impact on our community.
Uh, since we, since we have touched, uh, on the, on the SPOLOX, I was just looking at the, and our manager gives us a continuous update. Here, here is 27 million, 432,061 dollars and 43 cents worth of, of transportation projects for Ware County and Waycross. And, uh, I can't, I can't envision anybody voting against a penny that does so much. I was never been so shocked in my life to hear some of the craziest, well, I call them crazy, stories that people, statements that was being made about the SPOLOX penny. Of course, the new, the, I've heard that one, Commissioner Carter talked about us giving ourselves a raise. We can't give ourselves a raise. That's not even in the equation. The raising is raising all these dirt roads that people hollering and carrying on about. And that's where it's at. There's 27 million dollars worth of it right there, paid for with that penny. Does anybody want to know how many meals of taxes that'd be if we didn't have that penny? About six meals. And people, we don't need six meals of taxes. What we need is the penny. That 45% of that little old copper penny comes from outside Ware County. These people coming in here to trade. Now, how in the world could we say that ain't a good deal? But these folks out there saying that. And that's, and that's a shame. But anyhow, I'll, I'll, I'll get off of that bin. But, uh, I want to, I want to encourage people to, hey, pray before you go to polls and vote. Pray about these things.
Yeah.
There's, 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 there's power in prayer, people. And we need to do more of that. And somebody mentioned about, I think, Commissioner Pope, about the Miracle League. I got invited to the, to our 16 million dollar Trembling Earth Recreation Complex, people. It was built by the SPOLOX penny. We got everything out there that you can imagine for, for our young people. And that's where it's at, is our young people. We don't have a field for handicapped children to play on. They can't play out there in that clay. You can't push a wheel, a wheelchair through clay. And whenever me and my wife got invited out there about three years ago to pitch out the first ball, I walked away from there with tears in my eyes. I said, people, 50 families. I said, let me tell you all something, we can't do nothing about it now. But I said, in the next SPOLOX, we'll make it our business to have a, a, a spot in there for this field that you need. Got the land, got the place to put it, just got to have the funds. And that penny is what funds it. So people need to pray long and hard. Whenever you vote against it, you vote against all these programs that we need for our, for our community. Young people, handicapped children, the grownups, the seniors, everybody. Anyhow, I'll hush. Thank all of you for coming. Praise God for all of you coming. And let's continue to pray. Let's continue to pray, people, in the time times that we in right now with this, with this sickness that's going around. The plague, I call it a plague. That's what the Bible says and, uh, I agree with that.
One thing I wanted to mention and I failed to mention, uh, Hatcher Point Road is very, at the very end. We're just in the last few rows, so to speak. So, uh, once we go through that, get the punch lifts and we, we, um, accept it, close it out, then we'll have a little ceremony out there to officially open it.
You know, that's, that's a good, that's been a viable project, six, over $6 million. Probably one of the most expensive projects that's ever been done. Again, SPOLOX penny. And, uh, I know all, all my commission, you know, got hounded about it. When they gonna finish it? When they gonna finish it? You can't, you can't do road construction and push mud around. We've had a lot of rain through the, the two years and a half or however long it's been getting it done. I rode through it last night. It's a beautiful route. I said, what a magnificent, much needed piece of road that we got now. And it's almost completed. The signalization is being installed now. So with that, I'm on hush. Anybody else got anything to add? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Sir, second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of I saying aye?
Aye.
All right.